All right, I'd like to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order for August 12th, 2013. We have one public hearing regarding zoning change for 487 Knott Street, and then we will move right into the items for original consideration. So if the clerk would read number one.
Item number one, for final consideration, in ordinance calling for the rezoning of 2876 Olean Street and a portion of 2900 Olean Street from M2 Manufacturing to R1 Single Family.
This is discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, for original consideration, a resolution setting benefits for management employees.
This is dealing with health benefits, and this also has been discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution reaffirming adoption of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution adopting the Gateway Transit Implementation Plan.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution supporting a grant application to the Capital Region Economic Development Council for improvements and expansion of Liberty Park.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution appointing Richard Antikol, Scott Johnson, Christopher Sprarigan, and Heather Peterson to the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation.
This also was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Legislative Grant Award for firefighting equipment.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Legislative Grant Award.
Also discussed in public safety without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title to six properties.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing a refund of taxes which were overpaid by Planned Parenthood.
This has been discussed numerous times in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Penny Charland in an amount not to exceed $1,750.
Discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing a contract for engineering services for design of the water treatment plant and production well protection.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designate to sign an agreement with Solar City Corporation for the design, construction, maintenance, and operation of a solar energy system located at the Beavis Hill Reservoir.
This was also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution recognizing August 17th and 18th as Polish-American days in the city of Schenectady and recognizing the Polish-American experience in Schenectady.
All right, this will be taken out of order. Mr. Erickson will present that. Okay, thank you.
That's the addendum.
Okay, all right. And then item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of parcels of real property.
Also discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Erickson, seconded by Mrs. Brucker, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, I will now call the City Council Meeting for August 12th, 2013 to order and ask you to rise for the invocation that will be given by Reverend Felicia Collins from Bethel AME Church.
First start by having a moment of silence. Today, we regret to announce that John Nickel was killed today by riding his ATV. He is a member of the fire department here in Schenectady. As a matter of fact, he is a captain. If we can just have a moment of silence. Dear kind, loving Father, from whom our blessings are from, Lord, we ask that you would bless this City Council in the city of Schenectady. Lord, we ask that you bless all decisions that would be made, everything that would be discussed, that it would be done in decency and order as we rebuild this great city of Schenectady. Amen.
I'll ask Tony Benome to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo. Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Erickson. Ms. King.
Present.
Mr. Riggi. Ms. Blanchard is excused. Ms. Brucker.
All right, we have one out-of-order resolution, which is recognizing August 17th and 18th as Polish-American days in the city of Schenectady. Mr. Erickson.
Come on up.
Mr. Erickson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Resolution recognizing August 17th and 18th as Polish-American Day in the city of Schenectady and recognizing the Polish-American experience in Schenectady, whereas records indicate that John Lansing Zabriski was the first Pole to settle in Schenectady in 1792, and that in the 1920s, the city of Schenectady had become home to the third-largest Polish population in New York State, and whereas Santa Delbert's Parish was organized to serve the spiritual needs of the Poles in a fast-growing Mount Pleasant area, and whereas in 1909, the church was destroyed by fire, but through heroic efforts of its congregation, a new imposing brick church was built with 1,600 seats, was erected on Lansing Street in 1911, and whereas Santa Delbert's Church remains an inviting parish with its congregation consisting of 50% Polish-Americans and 50% of Schenectady and Capital Region melting pot, and whereas August is Polish-American Heritage Month, and on August 17th and 18th, 2013, Santa Delbert's Church will be holding its 28th Annual Polish Harvest Festival, and whereas the day's activities will culminate in the honoring of Polish culture and the fall harvest. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council recognize and commend Santa Delbert's Church and its congregation and express gratitude for their contribution to Schenectady community, and be it further resolved that the city's council recognize August 17th and 18th, 2013, as the 28th Annual Polish Harvest Festival to be held by the Santa Delbert's Church in Schenectady, New York. I move the adoption.
All right, seconded by Mrs. Brucker, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Mayor McCarthy, City Council, the Polish community of Schenectady accepts with great pride your declaration of Polish-American weekend in the city of Schenectady on August the 17th and 18th. In the 1920s, Schenectady had the third-largest Polish population in New York State, only Buffalo and New York City had more. With our church, Santa Delbert's, the focal point of the Polish community then and now, to celebrate, we are having our 28th Polish-American festival, and we invite everyone to celebrate with us on Saturday, 2 to 8, and Sunday, 12 to 7. Wonderful food, games, prizes, and fun for everyone at our church grounds on Crane Street Hill, where food, culture, and religion come together. Thank you.
Thank you.
And in Polish, we would say "jankuję".
All right, we have one public hearing, and that was regarding the zoning classification of 487 Knott Street from M1 Light Manufacturing to C4 Downtown Mixed Use. I have no one signed up for that public hearing, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. We will move on to the approval of the minutes from July 22nd. Caution, Ms. Parrazo, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Communications and petitions. Mr. Thorne.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, August 12th, 2013. From the mayor, a list of appointments dated August 12th, 2013. From Paul Lefond, Director of Water and Wastewater, a letter dated August 12th, 2013, recommending the award of a contract with CHA for the engineering services for design of water treatment plant and production well protection. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there is one petition with 46 signatures for the sidewalk repair of Emmett Street.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Anyone have any committee reports? No? Okay. Then we will move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and believe it or not, no one has signed up, so we'll keep moving on here. Entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda, the consent agenda. Ms. Parrazo, seconded by Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Privilege of the floor regarding city issues. I have four people signed up. The first is Deborah Rembert.
I wanted to bring your attention to my meeting that I will be having on August 21st at 6:30. Now, the last meeting I had last month, none of you showed up, so I'm hoping that some of you will come out and help me out with this meeting on August 21st, and I just want to thank committee person Porterfield for helping me. She has been very helpful. You know, sometimes you get a little nervous. Isn't that odd that I've been speaking for so long, and then sometimes I get a little choked up here? And I want to just say that I wanted to talk about the fact that, let me just think about it later. I can't think about it right now, so there's a couple of things I want to talk about, but I didn't get it together today. But come out to my meeting, because we need more people to start coming out to this Landlord Tenant Association meeting. We need people to be interested in what's happening to them with their landlords. People calling me on the phone and not telling me what's really going on on the telephone, that's not good enough. If they come out to the meeting, we can give them reasons to help, how they can help themselves. We can tell them different laws that are in effect now that can help tenants with their landlords and their issues. If tenants don't come out, how can we help you? We need more tenants to come out to these meetings so that they can understand what they may be able to do about the various problems. Just calling me on the phone is not good enough. Come out to the meetings, hear what the solutions are for some of your problems so that things may be able to change for you, you know? And I'm hoping that people will be listening. And thank you so much, and I also want to thank Mary McLean. She really tried to help out, and Mary Porterfield tried to help out, and we need more to try to help out with this, you know, this program, because this is a viable program that we need to have functioning in the city to try to help people, to make it possible for people to have a better understanding with their landlords. Thank you.
Deborah, where is the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's going to be in the Machacity Room at the library on 99 Clinton Avenue in Schenectady, and it's August 21st at 6:30. So I really hope that some of you will really show an interest, because that will help some of the people to come out as well, mayor. And so do have a blessed day.
Thank you. Tony Benome.
Just one quick thing. I'm sorry to see Tina go from the assessor's office. I know it's a done deal, but I just want to say how helpful she was and kind she was down there anytime I needed anything, or I've heard a lot of people say that, and the woman that's working at the front desk over there, she is super, so I just want to give a shout out to that. But I'm very sorry to see Tina go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Harry Brand.
Harry Brand, resident property owner in Schenectady. First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Riggi, for your effort in accomplishing the money for the Oak Street Bridge. The effort you put into it for the people and the citizens of this city is really appreciated. And Ms. Brucker, I want to congratulate you on your new property in this union. I'd like to talk about the Central Park. I think it's going downhill. We lost our concession stand there, no concession stand at all, no paddle boats to rent. What is this park for? What is the park for? The largest park in this city, and we don't have anything there for the people. Most of the equipment is rundown. I don't understand it, and that's why I say when you can give out such tremendous salaries and benefits and clothing to the employees, and then you fire one employee in the city because they live outside the city. What's the matter with the rest of the employees that live outside the city? Every one of our department heads lives outside the city. I don't see you putting pressure on them getting in the city. You made an agreement with the new police chief. These are good people. I got nothing against them, but they should live in the city of Schenectady if they want to work here, especially as leaders. What poor representation. It's a shame that one person goes because they live outside the city. I can't understand this and your reasoning for it when you don't make everybody or treat everybody equal. Get them all in the city or let them go someplace else. It's as simple as that. If you have to contract to work out, get them in the city. We wouldn't have the crime we have here if all the city employees lived here in this city. My gosh, now you talk about the paving of the city streets. What a shame. Broadway, from the Baumler Hill up to Bosh's Liquor Store. It's a rumble route. It's terrible, all rumble strips. Hildeberg Avenue hasn't been touched in years, and you're fooling around here. The same with this contract downtown on Erie Boulevard. The railroad hasn't done anything for us. The underpasses down there are terrible, a disgrace to this city, and you're fixing up Erie Boulevard. Get after the railroad, make them do their share. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed Haifaz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council member. My name is Mohammed Haifaz, and I live in Schenectady. Last month, on July 26th, somebody threw a brick at my front door, my office front door, shattering glass of my office. A few days earlier, the store next door to my office was held at gunpoint on broad daylight. Furthermore, someone was shooting at the windows in Mount Pleasant with a BB gun. There was also a robbery reported by John Horton on Webster Street. I don't know what's going on in Mount Pleasant these days. We were told that even the cameras three feet away from that corner, 8th Avenue and Crane Street, it's not even working, so we're not going to catch anybody who did these crimes. I was called at 7:30 in the morning by the police department to run into my office because the office door is shattered and is wide open, and somebody would walk right in and steal my computers and my equipment. We have been asking for additional police officers on Crane Street for years. What we got instead is code officers. Code officers just go up and down. Crane Street ticketing property owners, harassing landlords and tenants, provide us with no safety nor security. Code officer took $600,000 from the HUD grant on the condition that they improve the neighborhood. They have nothing to improve, they have done nothing close to improving the neighborhood. What they do, however, is trespassing on private properties, snooping around mailboxes, spying on tenants and landlords, copying their names off the mailboxes, and see who lives where, and file charges against property owners. And you know what they do? Trespassing, snooping, and spying. Is this the code officer new mission, the code officers, code enforcement officer new mission? Apparently, they have plenty of time on their hands. In Mount Pleasant, we had cleanup day, we had three planning events. We have not seen code officer participating in these events. We have seen the police chief and his officers, we have seen the fire chief and his firefighters, we have seen people from the development department, and we have seen the general services office. And we are so grateful to these people cleaning the neighborhoods. We have not seen anybody from the code department. What we need are police officers. We don't need code officer to trespass, snoop around, and spy on our people. We need more police on Crane Street.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Parrazo.
I have my trusty flyer here, Church of Santa Delbert, Polish-American. I'm carrying Georgia's word. I grew up on Prospect Street, which was at the time a predominantly Polish neighborhood, so I will absolutely be there because I was able to have lots of treats as a kid for my Polish neighbors. Quest, which is one of the many wonderful programs in the Hamilton Hill area. Quest is in the old Schenectady Light Opera Building. They serve hungry kids. Also run by Judy Atchison, she does all sorts of community service work with her children, all sorts of education, including dance and computer skills, and it's a wonderful program. They're having a fundraiser tomorrow night at Pettis Restaurant. All you have to do is go in and have dinner, and 20% of the proceeds will go to Quest, so please make your reservation. I know it's a heavy lift to go in and have delicious Italian food and possibly a glass of wine, but if you're out and about, please go in tomorrow and have dinner at Pettis. And then finally, I want to say a specific thank you to our city engineer. The Oak Street Bridge is not an easy situation, and I think it's something that could have ended up through the bureaucracy, taking much longer than it did, and Chris Wallin, our city engineer, did yeoman's work to make sure that he could procure state and federal grants to make this work happen faster. Not fast enough. I'm still a little nervous that it's not going to happen until 2015, but I know that we're doing the best that we can, and I personally really appreciate someone who lives in Bellevue and travels over the Oak Street Bridge often, and for our emergency services and such, I really appreciate his diligence on this, and I know that the people in the community do as well.
Good. Thank you.
Wait, and Bellevue had a wonderful picnic on Saturday.
Yes, they did.
It was the picture-perfect day. I don't know who they know or how they're connected, but it was really wonderful. I mean, there was pony rides and sheep and free, everything was free, and people came out in droves, and it was fabulous. So congratulations.
And a good band. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. At the last council meeting, I told folks that we were working on a program regarding litter, and I just wanted to say that I would update it today. So this week, we actually have a meeting in the Hamilton Hill neighborhood, actually, with some department heads, and we're going to be talking about that particular issue along with some others, and then beyond that, we're going to be reaching out to other neighborhood associations to see if we could work on this problem together. But I just want to update folks and let them know that we're continuing to work on this.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know about the rest of you. I fielded some calls on Time Warner, you know, the change from analog to digital. Well, obviously, who doesn't know how to get it? They're not going to be watching this meeting tonight, but it has affected a lot of people, especially our seniors, because they do watch government channels, and I'm really not quite sure why those are the channels that are going to require an extra fee eventually of a dollar a month for the converter for those who do not have a digital tuner in their set. And I know their contract does come under the purview of the city council, so I'm a little concerned that those government channels that are public access are now, people have to pay more to get that. So that's a concern of mine, it's a concern about the calls that I've received from people, and I kind of tell them, well, right now, if you have a digital tuner, you don't need, they don't even know this, because they'll have to reprogram their set to find the channel, so if they run through the scan, it'll come up, and it's on 116, I think, 1, 2, and 3, or 2, 3, and 4, or one or the other. That's where the channels are right now. But the signal is kind of weak, too, at least on the channel that covers the city council meetings and the county ledge meetings and the other neighborhood meetings, because there's a lot of ghosts in that picture, I have to say that. Ms. Porterfield, I would like you to maybe ask for a meeting, you know, in public service and utilities, and talk to some representatives from Time Warner, so we can get a little update on this, because I don't really have the answer. Why was this singled out, you know, for extra charge to the people? And there's people that do watch, they keep abreast of city matters by watching government television, and maybe a dollar a month may not sound like much, but to some people, it is a lot of money that are really on a fixed income, so I'd like to see something done with that. The picnic, as Ms. Parrazo brought out, it was a huge success, and without the help of the city and the city workers, because there was work to be done in that park beforehand. The park took a pretty good hit from the tornado in May, and city crews went in there, they cleaned all the debris out, there were some trees, you know, just stumps there, they cleaned everything out. There was some damage to the pavilion in the middle, that roof was fixed, everything was cleaned up, they really did a great job. Rebuilt the bandstand, because the bandstand was in disrepair, rebuilt that, so a lot was done by the city. And so the people that enjoyed that picnic, they should really, you know, a big thank you goes out to the city, Jeremy Howard, Bill Majaka, the people that put this all together, and the crews that did the work there, because they did a terrific job and got everything done on time, and it went off without a hitch, and it is one of the real nice events in Schenectady, that picnic. It's, you know, and the day was perfect, and everything was perfect, so, you know, again, thank you to all this city for their help. The DSIC appointments, this happens every year. I'm just wondering, in my mind, there's other people that want to serve on the DSIC. You know, it's come to my attention, and I'm wondering why it always seems to be the same names come up, because it seems to be like maybe there should be a better cross-reference of the whole improvement district, taxing district, because they are taxed for this, and they want to be, some feel that they're not represented correctly, so I would like to see maybe a little more effort to getting some new people on this board. I think it'd be a good thing for everything. About the Oak Street Bridge, again, I am glad that it's moving forward, and for me, I just, I mean, for people that don't know what Mr. Brand was talking about, I went to Taco's Town Hall meeting and asked for federal help, but that was apparently already in the works. That's fine. I hope the date is going to be moved up a little bit. Everything we can do to bring this, at least for the design features and the plans to go into, is going to be well appreciated, because there is a large portion of, all of Hungry Hill is cut off, and a big portion of Bellevue is cut off from especially emergency services. Mayor, we spoke about this today, and I'm glad you filled me in on what's going on, you know, up to now, and it sounds promising, and hopefully, anything we can do to fast-track this, of course, will be appreciated. So it's something that, the inconvenience part will... So it's something that, the inconvenience part, we'll put that aside, the inconvenience, but as Mr. Brand brought out about Broadway, Broadway is getting a lot of extra traffic because of this, so it's going to deteriorate even faster until this is done. A lot of people travel that little cut through, and there's businesses that are affected by it, Ferrari's restaurant businesses that are on Hungry Hill, they're affected. So I know it's no one's fault, well, I guess we could say it's the railroad's fault, because it's their bridge, but whatever we can do to move this along, it's appreciated by everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, on behalf of the city, would extend condolences and sympathy to the family of Fire Captain John Nichol, who died today in a ATV accident in Lewis County. The Time Warner, the city really does not have any control over that fee structure anymore with those franchise agreements, but as Riggi and other council members have pointed out, that should do some outreach and education for people so that they have a better understanding of what is happening and why it is happening. We're fortunate here in Schenectady where we have utilized public access really at a level that other communities envy. You know, these meetings have been broadcast live for many decades. We've switched, so we do our committee meetings live now, and there is a level of transparency in this community that does not exist in other areas, and we're just fortunate where we've expanded that, so we have a true public access channel where people can come in and use it. There's an educational channel used primarily by the school districts, and then the government channel, which is used by, you know, our government agencies, and so people have the opportunity to stay up on what is happening at different levels of government and just see really things in an unedited format. Again, on the Oak Street Bridge, again, compliment city engineer Chris Wallen, Bill Winkler, Director of Operations, because we didn't expect this to evolve in this nature. The report came back earlier this year, where there were just structural deficiencies that forced the closing of the bridge, and at that point, we were being told that nothing was going to happen for five years, six years, and Chris really went at it systematically, lobbying within the regional planning operation, Kabel District Transportation, Kabel District Regional Planning Group, and was able to get what's approximately $2 million lined up so that we can move ahead with, hopefully, the repair of the bridge. We will be coming back to the council shortly with recommendations to get an evaluation and design underway, and until that work is done, we won't be able to tell how quick or how slow the actual process will go. We are trying to do it in an expedited manner, but it's to do that initial design work first, and then to be able to see if, again, the money's lined up as quick as we can, and so we appreciate the assistance that's been given to us from the State Department of Transportation, the city staff, and the patience and tolerance of both the residents in Bellevue and Mount Pleasant who have been inconvenienced because of the closure of that bridge. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I would just also like to commend everybody involved with the Bellevue picnic. That was, I thought, tremendously successful, and as I was acknowledging the band, Mr. Riggi is a very talented musician, and I didn't know that before, but he plays the drums and he sings, so it was a good group. Also, just a reminder that the Day Nursery is having their Steak and Lobster Fest this Thursday, so if you haven't gotten your tickets and still want to go, you can give the Day Nursery a call, and I'm sure they'll be happy to accommodate you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Erickson, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned in record time.
That's amazing.